Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the city's channel, Pittsburgh, or the city channels Pittsburgh YouTube channel. With the clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Coghill, here. Ms. Curtis, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
There.
Reverend Burgess' chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you very much. As we join from our remote locations, please rise or put your hand over your heart for the pledge of allegiance, and then we will have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business will be proclamations. Ms. Smith has three proclamations to be read in the record. If you would please read them.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number Ten Oh Seven. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Carnegie Mellon University for recognizing the alumni, students, faculty, staff, and friends who have become their greatest assets. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, to be Carnegie Mellon University's Alumni Awards Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number Ten Oh Eight. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate Peggy Finnegan upon her retirement and thank her for reporting the news to the City of Pittsburgh for the past thirty years. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, to be Peggy Finnegan Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill Number Ten Oh Nine. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby thank and commend Tunch Ilkin for his unselfish service to those less fortunate residents of the City of Pittsburgh, and for being readily available to his local community. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, December twenty first, two thousand and twenty, to be Tunch Ilkin Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
I need a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Your second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. As have it. The next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted. We'll have the first speaker, please. The first speaker I have listed is William Parker.
Hello, everyone. My name is William Parker. I just wanted to say, we have to move past Paduto. We have to move past Paduto. At this point, we can't trust in him to deliver us the results that our city wants and needs. And that's why today I'm proud to announce that I'm running for the next mayor of Pittsburgh. Vote for Will Parker. Vote for Will Parker. You can find me on all my social sites under Vote for Will Parker. I look forward to representing the city for the next four years. As I said, we have to move past Bill Paduto. He has too many special interests and organizations and institutions that send out a clear systemic message. What happens if it's not for all, it's not for us. Clearly, it's not for all, and Bill Paduto is not for us. And again, that's why I'm proud to announce I'm running for the next mayor of Pittsburgh, Will Parker. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker I have is Ikahana How Makina. Are you with us? Ikahana How Makina?
Greetings. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, wonderful. Good day to all members of City Council. It's been a pleasure speaking with you all on a weekly basis when permitted. I would like to make our petition known that we are asking and also demanding of the city to turn over the Martin Luther King Cultural Center that is not being utilized and in, and is, in an abandoned state as it stands. And after looking up the property, it is slated to be owned or purported to be owned by the City of Pittsburgh. We would like to repurpose this building for the community as it was originally slated for the community with the development of cultural programs, specifically for children and anyone wanting to learn more about culture. For Dr. King himself stated that we are enslaved in our own land, and end quote. So it is the Iroquois Confederacy's mission and vision to revitalize our communities, our sacred spaces, our lands, to transform them into better places that can be used as community centers and community spaces to bring about healing of our people, to promote healing, to promote an intellectual conversation can be had in that space, to begin to deal with the ills of society that plagued our communities, starting with our children, the youth. We can begin with them. We have the opportunity to make a positive impact in the lives of the youth. They are hurting. Some of them are motherless, some of them are fatherless, and to leave them in that deplorable condition without addressing some of the ills and woes of their existence in this city that we are currently in would be a tragic outcome. So I am pleased that you can work alongside us. We are currently working on a petition. We are working on a petition to seek the community's input, because that is the process. That is the way of engaging the community, and we are doing that. And so as we continue to make you aware of what we need in order to serve our community, we will continue to enlighten you, we will continue to bring forth the change that we wish to see in the world. To sit back and do nothing would be a travesty. Justice delayed is justice.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Kotek Kibey. Kotek Kibey, are you with us today?
Greetings. Greetings. Kotek Kibey, Inca the Iroquois Confederacy Aboriginal American People. Today I'd like to mind the council municipality of Pittsburgh to bear in mind and to realize the full effect of an observance of human rights, and to realize that our people, indigenous peoples and individuals, that we have the right to the full enjoyment of all human rights and fundamental freedoms as recognized in the Constitution at Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, the Charter of the United Nations, the Charter of the Organization of American States, and international human rights law. To have the municipality of the City of Pittsburgh understand that our people, indigenous peoples, have collective rights that are indispensable for our existence, well-being, and integral development as peoples. In that regard, the municipality of Pittsburgh must recognize and respect the rights of indigenous peoples to our collective actions, to our judicial, social, political, and economic systems and institutions, to our own cultures, and to profess and practice our own spiritual beliefs, and to use our tongues and languages, and to our lands, most importantly, our territories, and our resources. The City of Pittsburgh and other municipalities and states shall promote with the full and effective participation of our people so we can effectuate the harmonious coexistence of rights and systems belonging to our different cultures. With that being said, it is very vital and important that the municipality city council meet with our people on a continuing basis to make sure that our rights are not being violated and encroached upon, as it has been as a result of colonization, ill-conceived federal policies and laws, and municipal policies and laws, to make sure that we can, to help you guys pass wise legislation, to make sure that our people are protected, and as the states in the Constitution and excluding Indians not taxed, meaning we have a government-to-government relationship upon our lands, which all municipalities and states must abide by their constitution. With that being said, I thank you for your time, and I yield.
Our last speaker is Shaman Poma Chakmam Yahalahi, the Shaman Medicine Woman for the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. What I've seen is ultra-varys, and that is police municipalities acting above and beyond their legal and constitutional powers of the courts, as I was egregiously forced assimilated in an act of color of law, which is against the Constitution, as I was pulled over. Now, the Office of Municipal Investigations is already involved in adjudicating this, and hopefully they'll do the correct thing. So I move forward to remind you of the American Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People. The United States remains committed to addressing the urgent issues of concerns to indigenous peoples across the Americas, including combating societal discrimination against indigenous and Aboriginal people, which I suffer from at the hands of your police, reaffirming that indigenous peoples are original diverse societies within our own identities that form an integral part of the Americas, concerned that our peoples have suffered historic injustices, as just been mentioned, i.e. interelia, colonization, dispossession of our lands, territories, and resources, thus preventing us from exercising our particular rights to the development in accordance with our own needs and interests. We've already secured some lands here, and will continue to do so. So we have some proposals that will be coming across your desk in relationship to some city recreational centers that have sat dormant, that we need to revive and revitalize, for we are creating our own permacultural spaces to grow our own food, so that we may survive on our own lands, after all the ill-conceived policies and depredations that we faced as a people. We helped the colonizers, the colonists, we helped them to survive upon our lands, we taught them how to grow food upon our lands, we taught them how to sustain our resources and keep them clean and purified, and that has not continued after all of the ill-conceived policies and depredations. So right now is a great time for city council to work along with our nation in our government-to-government relationship that we have, that was clearly outlined in Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, and excluding Indians not taxed, and many other bodies of laws and treaties, i.e. the Delaware Treaty, many other bodies of laws, international laws, universal direct, United declarations on the rights of indigenous peoples, as well as the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. So again, we thank you for this time and opportunity to speak and for you to do the right thing and assist us in securing our own cultural perspectives, and I yield. Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers, the next order of business will be presentation of papers. We'll start with Mr. Coghill for myself, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Thank you. I think there's no new papers. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number Nine Eighty Three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Three Thirty Five of two thousand and nineteen, amended previously by Resolution Five Sixteen of two thousand and twenty, authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to supplement a professional services agreement with a consultant, Eileen Papali, as a sole source to provide professional support services to staff of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure at a new cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars, an increase of fifteen thousand dollars. Bill Number Nine Eighty Four, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with Satola Construction for Construction Services Associated with the Allegheny Circle Phase Two Construction Project, and Providing for the Payment of the Costs thereof not to exceed two million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Bill Number Nine Eighty Five, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Seventy Two of two thousand and sixteen, as amended, entitled adopting and approving the two thousand and seventeen capital budget and the two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-two capital improvement program to transfer twenty thousand dollars from sport facility improvements to complete streets.
Councilman Burgess, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rule eight on Nine Eighty Three.
I have it here as if you want to do Ninety Three and Nine Eighty Four. Is that correct or not?
I thought it was just Nine Eighty Three, but if...
Yeah, Nine Eighty Four is the Allegheny Circle Project, that...
Would they rule eight to?
Yes, please. Yes.
All right. Mr. Coghill?
Motion to waive the rules of council on Nine Eighty Four.
So we have both Ninety Three and Nine Eighty Four. There's a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. The both bills will appear on tomorrow's agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Nine Fifty Eight, Resolution Authorizing a Second Amendment to the Pittsburgh Development Fund Corporation Agreement dated January twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-five between the city and the URA Council District Hall. Bill Number Nine Eighty Six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement and/or a contract with Allegheny Clean Ways and Operation Better Block for professional services in connection with the two thousand and twenty pickup PJ litter and dumping cleanup initiative, and providing for payment of the costs not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Bill Number Nine Eighty Seven, Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement with the URA in connection with the URA's application for the redevelopment assistance capital program grant of up to one million, five hundred thousand dollars for the former Homewood School Project, Council District Nine. Bill Number Nine Eighty Nine, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision for the City of Pittsburgh's Official Thor Facilities Plan for seven hundred Second Avenue.
Councilwoman Gross. You have a motion to waive the rules for Bills Nine Eighty Six and Nine Eighty Nine?
I was spacing out. Thank you, Councilman. Also, you know, I might as well mention, like, before I make that motion, since you called on me, that I've introduced the bill from the URA with the Cooperative Agreement Amendment, and I just wanted to acknowledge how helpful they were over the last week. Had exchanges of emails, lots of background documentation, conversations with staff and board members, and even Assistant Director Walker, and I chatted last night on the phone, and I have a lot more information, and I look forward to talking about that bill. As, just again, just relevant to Nine Fifty Eight, the URA also expressed to me that they are perfectly comfortable if we just let this take its normal timeline, which would put it on, I think, standing committee agenda in January. And they said that that is not problematic for them. So I just wanted to say that. And then I'll make a motion to waive rule eight for Bill Nine Eighty Six and Nine Eighty Nine.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posers nay. Okay, thank you very much. Those bills will appear on tomorrow's agenda. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Nine Ninety, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the City of Pittsburgh's Park Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit of Revenue Into and Expenditures for the City Pittsburgh Park Trust Fund.
Thank you very much. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number Nine Ninety Five, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Name Animal Rescue in an Amount Not to Exceed Thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars for animal care and detention services provided for the city. Bill Number Nine Ninety Six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a license agreement between the city and Plaza at Grand View Owners Association, at a cost not to exceed one hundred and four thousand, four hundred dollars. Bill Number Nine Ninety Seven, Resolution Amending Resolution One Ninety Three of two thousand and eighteen, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a three-year professional services agreement with Shot Spotters, Inc., for the continuation and expansion of the city's gunshot detection system by extending the term for five additional years and increasing the not-to-exceed amount of four million, nine hundred sixty-two thousand, twenty-two dollars. Bill Number Nine Ninety Eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a commodities agreement with Fire Water Response LLC for the HEPA equipped air scrubbers.
Mr. Carter.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules. I can't remember. I don't have it in front of me. Is it all bills or just the...
Nine Ninety Five, Nine Ninety Six.
That's what I thought, just two. Okay. I'd like to make a motion on those two. Thank you.
You're probably moving second. All those in favor that we waive the rules on Bills Nine Ninety Five, Nine Ninety Six. You heard the motion all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Thank you very much. Takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number Nine Ninety Three, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into an agreement with Legal Edge Software for Licensing and Professional Services relating to maintenance and support of the Department of Law's Legal Case Management and Administrative Support Software System, at a cost not to exceed two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred dollars, over a term of five years. Bill Number Nine Ninety Four, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with ESO for upgrades to the city's firehouse software system, at an overall cost not to exceed two hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Bill Number Nine Ninety Nine, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to adopt an existing government contract and enter into any related agreement with KaraSoft Technology Corporation to provide Google Cloud subscription services for a four-year term at a cost not to exceed four million, forty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Bill Number One Thousand, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Seven Twenty-nine of two thousand and nineteen, which authorized the city to extend a contract or an agreement with Pittsburgh Community Television for Public Access Television Services by extending the term of the agreement until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Bill Number One Thousand One, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement with Monka to provide a building benchmarking management platform software solution for a strong sum not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for one year.
Thank you very much. That brings us to...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Miss Strasburger.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council for Bills Nine Ninety Three, Nine Ninety Nine, One Thousand, and One Thousand One.
Probably move, probably move to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Thank you very much for that catch, Miss Strasburger. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Nine Ninety One, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Ninety Seven of two thousand and seventeen, effective December twenty-eighth, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Eighteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Eighteen CDVG Program and the Two Thousand and Eighteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-Three Capital Improvement Program to Reflect All Insured Parties for a Public Service Grant Contract by Reducing Steel City Boxing by twenty-five hundred dollars and Increasing Steel City Boxing Association and Spring Hill Civic League by twenty-five hundred dollars. Bill Number Nine Ninety Two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Sixty Three, Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Nineteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Nineteen CDVG Program, the Two Thousand and Nineteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-Four Capital Improvement Program to Reflect All Insured Parties for a Public Service Grant Contract by Reducing Steel City Boxing Association by twenty-five hundred dollars and Increasing Steel City Boxing Association and Spring Hill Civic League by twenty-five hundred dollars.
That takes us to President Councilwoman Kell Smith. She has seven communications. If the clerk could read these communications, please.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number Nine Eighty Eight, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting an eight-hundred seventy-five dollar donation to the Department of Public Safety to support the Bureau of Police Mounted Unit from Pamela Littman. Bill Number One Thousand Two, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Evan Gross, Her The Act and Pay Policy Revised in June of two thousand and eighteen. Bill Number One Thousand Three, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting that in October, the Bureau of Police received a box of twenty-four individual boxes, each valued at forty-four dollars, with a total value of one thousand, fifty-six dollars. The boxes were sent from an organization called Adopt an Officer. The donors remain anonymous. Bill Number One Thousand Four, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting that in November, the Bureau of Police received a box of twenty-four individual boxes, each valued at forty-four dollars, with a total value of one thousand, fifty-six dollars. The boxes were sent from an organization called Adopt an Officer. The donors remain anonymous. Bill Number One Thousand Five, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a five-hundred dollar donation to the Department of Public Safety to support the Bureau of Police Mounted Unit from Capitol... Bill Number One Thousand Six, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a three thousand, five hundred dollar donation to the Department of Public Safety from Motorola Solutions, Inc., of an APX Nets, to be used by Chief Scott Schubert. Bill Number One Ten, Communication from City Council, Notifying of its election under the Pennsylvania Liquor Code to Extend the Timeframe for City Council to Render a Decision on Council Bill Two Thousand and Twenty, Zero Seven Seventy-Nine, entitled, Resolution Requesting the Approval of an Inter-Municipal Transfer of Liquor License from Folder Enterprises, Inc., to the applicant's Cabaret LLC, for the premises located at seventy-nine, twenty-eight Frankstown Avenue, known as Cabaret LLC pursuant to amended Pennsylvania Liquor Code.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to read, receive, and file.
Some move. Very brief discussion.
Need a second.
Second.
Councilman Burgess, I'm sorry, Councilman Burgess, on Bill Ten Ten.
Yes.
That's an interesting approach. I didn't realize we had the authority to do that. How does one go about extending the time process by which council needs to decide on a liquor license application? I mean, I don't want to get in the weeds, but if you can...
Sure, we'll send you, yeah, if you want to, we send you what we got from the law department, kind of a cheat sheet on how to do it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I mean, I don't want to get in the weeds, but if you can...
Sure, we'll send you, yeah, we, if you want to, we send you what we got from the Law Department, kind of a cheat sheet on how to do it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other conversation? No other conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose is nay. Thank you very much. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action, starting as always with Councilman R. Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 976, Reported the Committee on Finance and Law for December 9, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 938, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Accept a Donation of Professional Services from Value Capture LLC to Provide Education and Coaching on Leader Learning in Turbulent Time via Virtual Sessions to Include One-to-One and Group Sessions of Pro-Bono Work over a Three-Month Period with an Estimated Value of $17,500 and Further Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement with Value Capture LLC set forth the Terms of Such Services.
No, she made something about the...
Bill Number 939, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, Effective December 23rd, 2019 as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDVG Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program so as to Identify Specific Projects in City Council District Five, Remaining Citywide Programs and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operation, Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents of the City.
Further reading title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith. Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 977, Reported the Committee on Public Safety Services for December 9, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 940, Resolution Authorizing the City's Department of Public Safety to Purchase Lafayette Polygraph Equipment and Accessories from Lafayette Instrument Companies, Inc. at a Cost Not to Exceed $15,511.
Um, you've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith. Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 978, Reported the Committee on Human Resources for December 9, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 936, Resolution Amending Resolution 45 of 2020, which authorized the City to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement and/or a Contract with Consultants and/or Service Providers for Professional Services in Connection with Civil Service and MPEO ETC Required Assessment and Evaluation of Public Safety Candidates by Increase in the Total Not to Exceed Amount by $30,000 to Cover Services at the Beginning of 2021. Bill Number 937, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 257 of 2018, of 2018, which provided for a Contract for Consultant Services with Industrial Organizational Solutions, Inc. for Services Related to the Firefighter Recruitment Process by Increasing the Not to Exceed Amount by $26,400.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith. Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That takes us to Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 979, Reported the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for December 9, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 941, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement with Beyond20 and Sherwell to Provide and Implement an ITSM System to License, Implement, Manage, Operate, and Deliver IT Services to Meet the Needs of the City at a Sum Not to Exceed $542,731.85. Bill Number 942, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 31 of 2020, Authorizing the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter into a Contract with Houston Technologies, Inc. for the Purchase of Constituent Relationship Management Software Services Necessary for the Operation of the City's 311 Response Line by Extending the Term for Three Additional Years and by Increasing the Authorized Spending Amount by $173,938.85.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any other discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
This is Kell Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Chair, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 980, Reported the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for December 9, 2020 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 934, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Food Facilities Plan for the Flats on Forward LP 5824 Forward Avenue. Bill Number 935, Resolution Authorizing the Approval of the 2021 Housing Opportunity Fund Annual Allocation Plan, Council District Hall.
Um, you've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the pass of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bill having received the required, the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Uh, that takes us into meeting announcements, and then I'll do motions or resolutions afterwards. Council will meet for their Standing Committee Meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, December 16th at 10:00 a.m. To register to speak at tomorrow's meeting, please, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 before 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning, or email your comments to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. As an early reminder, due to Christmas holiday next week, council will hold both the regular and standing committees' meeting on Monday, December 21st at 10:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. respectively. To register to speak at Monday's meeting, please call the clerk's office before 9:00 a.m. December 21st for the regular meeting, and before 12:30 p.m. for the standing committees' meeting. You may also send comments via email to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Is there anything from members of council during motions or resolutions?
Reverend Burgess, I'd like to make a, uh, I like to place a vote for the votes I missed and I vote.
So noted. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you for chairing.
Always. Anyone else? Any other comments? Any other concerns? If no other concerns, I think we were all here today. I need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay. We are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.